I'm not responding.
We're recording, okay. I'd like to call the board. Uh, we have some meeting for July ninth. Uh, first item is the budget.
Roll call, please.
Councilmember Corell.
Yeah.
Councilmember Fockingham.
Here.
Councilmember Garcia.
Yeah.
Mayor Greenberg.
Yeah.
Councilmember Homa.
Yeah.
Councilmember Maddox. Councilmember Page.
Yeah.
Mayor Greenberger, for him as president.
Uh, I need a motion to excuse Councilmember Maddox.
So moved.
Second. You have a motion, a second, all those in favor?
Aye.
The next item is the approval of the council agenda.
Motion to approve the agenda.
Second. Is there any discussion? Uh, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The agenda is approved. Item number six is the approval of the June eleventh, two thousand twenty-four city council meeting minutes.
Motion to approve the meeting moves.
Second. Uh, we have a motion, a second is any discussion, the revisions, changes. Uh, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The minutes have been approved. Uh, item number seven is a public hearing to hear citizens' comments on a request by Rebecca Gates of the Archdiocese of St. Louis for a malt liquor by the drink license at seventy-two forty-eighteenth Avenue. And, uh, I would like to have Becky come up and start the conversation. State your name and address, please.
Home address?
Good.
I don't care, I just say home address. Um, so my name's Rebecca Gates. I, uh, work for I the Immaculate Conception, the old Immaculate Conception. And my address is five nine six Hickory Manor in Arnold, Missouri. So sorry, I'm not a hundred percent familiar besides that I work here, um, with the area. And the reason we are here was because, um, with the subsumption of Saint Mary Magdalene took over, um, the Immaculate Conception campus because the Archdiocese closed Immaculate Conception. Um, so when they do that, they have to maintain the buildings, all of that. Um, we've had a liquor license there forever. I really can't say, I've been an employee there for two years. But before that, I know they had before COVID, all the fish fries, everything like that. So we've always had this liquor license. But when we were subsumed, the deacon that was holding the liquor license is no longer there, he's retired. So I'm the sole employee right now. And so I just changed myself to the managing officer and I did it with the state and the county already. And I got that approval and I didn't realize this process here too. Um, so I didn't know it wasn't going to be considered a renewal because the other two were, it was just a change in the managing officer. Um, but I guess that's basically why we're here. There's nothing changing about what we're plans on doing. We're still using the building for like trivia nights when people want to rent it out. So the liquor license is basically there just so that people can bring in liquor. But as you're aware, because I, you know, I had to learn about liquor licenses myself, obviously. Um, I have to apply that we can sell them with it. It's not like there's a separate license just to have liquor on the property. Um, but I can tell you in the last two years, we haven't ever dealt with the sale of liquor. We've only dealt with the trivia nights and all of that, that people brought in or gave away free. And obviously we encourage that because I don't want to have to deal with getting uh, a bartender because that's going to be me and I don't want to do it, but I would. Um, so I'm not encouraging that. I usually encourage them to, to be making it the BYOB or uh, including any place where they're giving it away free or whatnot. So that's what the intent of this liquor license is. It's just to continue business as we've always done. Um, if we don't have that liquor license, I do have to say that my job right now is very difficult because I have to have revenue to keep up the buildings. The Archdiocese is not going to help us with that. I know that's sounds weird, but most likely the building will just start deteriorating. I do have artists, I mean, I have people here, I rent the building out to other people. Um, and right now we're just pretty much covering the costs of the building. Um, without the trivia nights and stuff that we make the money on, I won't even be able to cover the cost of the building. So I, I don't foresee us keeping it open. And I think that would be very poor for the community because I know there's not many facilities because that's why I get calls is there's not many facilities that can rent for so cheap and you know, have their community. So that's why we're requesting this.
Okay, thank you. And now we'll entertain comments from the public.
Hello. Hello. I'm Patty Nurey and I live at seventy-two fifty Sarah. And I work at my workshop over at seventy-two forty Anna, which is one street across from where I live. Um, it's a great place over there in that building. And Becky has it right now fully leased. Uh, well, on, on the main floor, there are the Irish arts, which have been there for like eighteen years. Um, and they, they teach children. And I think they might have adult classes, but mostly children in dance and flute and singing and all sorts of things in the Irish arts. And then upstairs, um, there are, there are other artists here tonight who came in. Uh, these three ladies are all different artists of different types of art. Um, they're all excellent. Uh, it's, it's something else to go up in those rooms up there and see the art they're producing. Um, it's a fantastic place that's right now, it's like Becky said, it's kind of barely being maintained because they don't charge us too much, uh, rent for the, uh, the rent every month. Um, and, and the things that, that Becky has encouraged and put on in the gymnasium. Um, are, it's just pretty neat. They, they've got, uh, like she said, trivia nights and, uh, uh, I see groups that come in who, um, it's, I think it's disadvantaged youth who come in and play basketball with a coach of some sort. Uh, they're there occasionally. Um, something they can't do anywhere else because there just aren't facilities. And, uh, I think it would make sense to keep their license up, which is in effect, it's, it's renewing it. Other than I guess the process is different since they had to change the name on it. But in the effect of it is renewing what has been. And now they're at a point where they're going to be trying to build up more things going on in there so that they can make, continue to maintain the buildings. Um, and I, I don't think it's going to change the community as far as like, um, you know, drunken disobedience or whatever. I, I don't think that's been happening over there and I don't see why this would make it start to happen. So I just think it's a good idea to renew it or to, to approve.
Thank you. Anyone else like to speak? Either for or against? And, and I'd be glad to mention, yeah. We sort of have a time limit on.
Okay. Quickly. Uh, I'm Sarah Blumenfeld. I live, um, seven, seven, three, five Mohawk Place in Clayton. Um, I'm a tenant, um, artist in the building and I just want to say that, you know, we're there every day. We're actually keeping the place from becoming a derelict building and keeping it from being anything where any crime could ever take place or, or is I've not seen any alcohol use or any kind of drug use or anything on, on the premises. And we just kind of, we keep it running as a really cool art center and, um, community center. And so I think, um, contrary to the worries that you might have with a liquor license, we do the opposite. We keep it, um, on the up and up. All right, thanks.
All right, thank you. Is there anyone else that would like to speak? If that's the case, then, uh, uh, the public hearing is, is now, uh, closed. Uh, item number eight is a public forum, the first of two, uh, where you're welcome to really speak on any topic of interest to the council and the city. Uh, is there anyone that would like to speak at public forum? No? Okay, we have one other chance after you listen to what we have to say. Uh, one of nine are announcements.
Let Them Eat Art is Friday night. It's like my favorite event in Maplewood.
Yeah.
So definitely go, it's a great time.
Okay. And, uh, item number ten is the, a report, uh, from the Human Services Commission. Uh, so we have a representative.
Hi, my name is, uh, Amber Shanter. Hello, council members. Uh, this is my first time doing this, so bear with me. I am looking at my phone, not as being rude, but I have the PowerPoint and my notes on my. Um, so, uh, I am the chair for the Human Services Commission. I was appointed, um, last year. Uh, well, at the end of last year, started at the beginning of this year. And I'm just here to give you an update on what we've been working. Excellent. So the agenda today is I wanted to kind of take you guys on the same journey that we've been on while I've been on the commission, which is where it kind of started, um, really anchoring everybody to what the purpose of the commission is. Um, again, because from what I understand, it's been a while since, uh, someone has presented to the council. So wanted to start there, then talk through kind of our planning, planning framework, uh, how we're setting priorities and then where we are slash what we're working on now. So where we started, uh, to re-anchor to the purpose, actually, I can read those just now. Uh, I wasn't sure. Um, the purpose is, you know, and this is in our, um, bylaws and everything like that. So it's to advise the city council in all matters regarding the planning and contracting for human service programs to adequately meet the needs of the citizens of the city of Maplewood, especially the law and moderate in, low and moderate income. Um, it is a volunteer commission. Uh, the point of it, I'm not going to read through all of the bullet points, but essentially we're meant to determine kind of what are the needs of, um, the people within Maplewood. Uh, basically kind of short, think through those, prepare a plan that we would then recommend to council on how to meet those needs. Uh, then basically review, uh, kind of if there's any service providers or costs or anything like that, that would be associated with that plan. Do that research for you guys so that way you can make an, uh, an adequate business data dri- data driven decision on it. Um, and then basically also look into if there's any other local, state, federal government, um, you know, conflicts or anything like that, that we would have to take into consideration when implementing any of these suggestions. Uh, and then anything that you guys would want us to do. So if you have any questions for me today or you want to recommend anything, obviously more than happy to have that conversation. Um, but when I took over the commission, um, you know, they had spent roughly two years, uh, creating the growth fund that is now in place. And when that kind of separated off and became its own thing, the commission was a little bit stranded. The feedback that I heard was we keep spinning wheels. We're not really getting traction. We're not getting things done. We're just kind of, they were almost rudderless, right? Uh, there was no direct, clear direction as to what they should be looking into next. Um, so when I took over the commission, the first thing I was like, well, we need to go back to the basics, right? What is our process? Um, you need process in order to kind of anchor yourself to where you should be within the year for planning. Uh, so through that, we all brainstormed together and we basically came up with this framework that you'll see. It might seem a little bit odd, starting with finalize, but it is in chronological order. And that is the reason why is because we anchored it to the budget, um, the yearly financial budget that the council approves and when you look at budget. Um, so that is why really in Q two, if you look at the second thing, we're planning, we're basically figuring out what is going to be the priority for the next year. Um, then in Q three, we just look back and we, the point of looking back is obviously understanding and measuring yourselves as to how uh, programs that you have recommended in the past is very, very important. Um, so look back is to do that as well as research, what other places have done and, um, other things that we could recommend based on the plan. Uh, then refinement, which would happen in Q four, is us actually building that plan that we would recommend to council. Um, so hopefully this year we'll actually have a really good template of that. And I want it to be a collaborative effort between us and council as to what information you guys are looking for versus what we are supplying. Um, obviously when it comes to scalability and being able to do these initiatives efficiently, having these processes and having templates that everybody is aligned to speeds things up because you know exactly what we're going to be recommend, like information. So example, like resource information, if there's providers within Maplewood that could have that, what the cost would be, what the LOE would be, how you would measure it, those kind of things. Um, and then finalize would be us basically working with the council to make sure that hopefully the action plan is good to go so that when we present it to you prior to, and we would present it in Q two prior to the budget being approved. So that way you guys can review it, you can, you can decide on if you want to move forward with it, so on and so forth. Um, but that's what that finalize section is, is to kind of make sure that we're dotting our, dotting our, uh, I's and crossing our T's, if you will. So this is the process that we outlined. Um, you'll see a little note down there. Basically, we are going to, I want to make the, uh, commission get used to being continuous improvement. So every year we will take the time to relook at that, this process and see ways that we can improve it. Um, change if things need to move around. Um, I think the, the budget or financial, um, kind of approving timeframe might be changing or has changed. So we would adjust it based on that, uh, those kind of things. But just really make sure that we're trying to be the best that we can be and the most efficient that we can be when we're, when we're coming up with and planning these needs for council to review. Okay. So then next up was, okay, well, what do we start on, right? Um, I'm sure as everybody knows here, uh, when you try to boil the ocean, you basically get nothing done, right? Um, so what I base, what I talked to the, uh, commission about was I was like, let's focus on one target for this next year and try to get a win underneath our belt, try to get a plan in front of the council, uh, before we take on more initiatives, right? So the better we get at these processes, the more we'll be able to take on different needs within the community. But to start, I said, let's just focus on one. So we did a brainstorming workshop where everybody basically kind of put their ideas as to what they thought was the most important um, with it, within Maplewood, uh, based on some research that we were able to get from the city, uh, on past surveys and, and different things like that, that were done as well as, um, we had the fire chief and the police chief, uh, help us out with needs that they saw in the community. Uh, and then basically we dot voted, right? Um, so what that does, I'm sure some of you already know, but basically it kind of makes you pick, okay, what are my top two priorities out of a list of, as you can see, there's about twenty post-it notes on this board. And then the one with the majority is what we're going to plan for this next year. And then we have a runner up to where if we get done with that planning ahead of schedule, which would be fantastic, uh, then we have something else that we can back up to. So the, uh, top priorities that won this year are, we're aging in place. So focusing on our senior community and understanding, uh, the needs that they have, um, whether it is disability, uh, accessibility, um, whether it is, uh, utility payments, help with, um, mortgage payments, different things like that. Um, whether it is also, we also are touching on kind of, uh, what, uh, do they feel like they are in touch with the community with Maplewood and ways that we could improve upon that? Um, and then the second thing up is a community land trust. So the idea of could Maplewood buy land to help ensure that there is affordable housing available? Um, I, from my understanding, the state of Missouri will not let you, uh, control renters, uh, what renter, uh, landlords charge renters. Uh, the one way around that is the city actually owning property and then they can set that rate, um, for whatever it needs to be. So something that we're looking into Webster Groves, um, and Kirkwood, I believe, are actually working. They, they bought and are working on land, community land trust right now. So one of the things that we're doing there too is reaching out to them to see if they have any insights or information, kind of, you know, hey, what went wrong, what went right? Um, learning from our neighbors, making sure that we're, uh, taking all of that information into when we make a recommendation. And then also we set up a shared repository, um, which believe mostly you should have access to. If you do not and would like access to it, please let me know. Um, but that is where we're keeping all of this information and collateral and everything like that. Because also, as you know, sometimes, um, you know, with volunteers only being for three years, uh, you know, people were on, people were off. Obviously we want them to be spun up and have the information, the history of how we got to where we are. Uh, so that way we don't have to spend a lot of time on catching people up and explaining to them why this is important. And so the last thing is kind of where we are today. Um, and basically, uh, for our look back timeframe, we are, uh, since we haven't completed or we haven't submitted a, uh, recommendation to the council yet, we are basically gathering information for senior residents. Um, we are conducting both a quantitative and qualitative survey. Uh, the reason for that is quantitative is obviously a lot easier to distill data and information from and make decisions on. However, qualitative is just as important, especially whenever you're talking about a community that may not be able to um, access online surveys or go to, uh, the park where we're handing out the surveys. Uh, so where you're doing in-person interviews, uh, giving the option to do that in the house with the seniors if they would prefer that. Um, and then, uh, yeah, so this basically will, the, the information that we gather from these surveys is what we'll use to put together a plan for council. And that's what we'll be focusing on in the fall. Um, and then our, my plan is especially since it's the first time that we're doing it is I'm hopefully going to get a draft in front of kind of everybody so that way you can give feedback, different things like that. So that way we can, uh, update the plan, make any adjustments that we need to Q one of next year and then have the final, uh, presentation slash recommendation to council in Q two next year. And I think that is where it is. Are there any questions for me?
Yes, um, we're discussing as a council, boards and commissions. Um, you know, my understanding is that all the members of the, uh, Human Services Commission are Maplewood residents.
I believe so, yes.
Yeah. And, uh, which is a good thing. But, um, so there was discussion because currently the requirements are that there's nine members and only three have to be with Maplewood. And since, uh, you have, uh, we talked about reducing the number to seven members and making sure that all of them are either Maplewood citizens or business people.
Okay.
Do you have any problems with that? Or do you, you know, did you want to discuss with the, uh, uh, with the rest of the commission members?
I would love to discuss it with the rest of the commission members. I'm very, I'm, I'm a person who likes transparency and making sure that everybody's included in those kind of decisions. Um, so I can definitely take that back. I would say my initial feedback is I do not mind it, um, being Maplewood residents. Um, right, I don't see a problem with that just because that's what we've got right now. Um, however, I will say that, uh, as far as the number goes, I know we have had some turnover in the last year. Um, I think we've had either three or four people leave just because they've had, you know, other priorities and things have changed. So if we cut it down and then we still have turnover, you're kind of like really pushing us down to a very, very small group of people that might actually be able to get things done. Um, whereas if we, since it is volunteer, if we leave it at that larger pool, then if we have a little bit of turnover, hopefully we'll still have a core group of people that'll, you know, stay on for years would be my only.
Yeah, I, I think the hope was that, uh, it make it easier to have a quorum. But, you know.
Oh, okay, I got you, yeah, yeah.
But you know, that, that's something you guys, you know, would need to write us some feedback on.
Okay.
Um, and also, uh, are you working with AARP at all?
Uh, not yet. That is something that is on our list and we do want to start working with them. That was actually some feedback that we've had in the surveys that we've done is people were saying that we should reach out to ARRP because they do have a lot of community services that they provide and we could partner with them.
Yeah, let me, I'm doing a project with Sheila right now and she's the director uh, of the, um, for the whole, I think Eastern Missouri now. They've got her spread pretty thin, but, uh, uh, she will get released.
Great.
And, uh, you know, I'm doing a project with first, with citizens for modern transit, so.
Okay.
Uh, I can get over very easily.
Yeah, no, that'd be, that'd be fantastic. More than happy to start talking to her and connecting.
And also, uh, Loews has, uh, reached out. Um, you know, to see if, in what manner they can help and me being an architect and doing a lot of, uh, ADA compliant and accessible, universal design type of projects. Having, you know, a, uh, the last time we did a senior year, uh, in ARRP had uh, a representative there to discuss how they can make their home more accessible.
Mm-hmm.
I had to correct you. I liked everything they said because it's not that hard. Uh, and then having resources in town with Loews and maybe we can get some type of, of discount for our seniors, uh, you know, with them. So, does anyone else have questions for comments?
I just want to say thank you for the very methodical way you're approaching a very complicated and complex situation and information. Um, I really appreciated just from like my background and like program management, like picking up on what you're doing. It's really nice. So thank you.
Thank you, I appreciate that. I will say, um, Amber's done a great job of being kind of our liaison with, uh, city, uh, the city. But however, if there's anybody from a council, you know, standpoint that wants to be a sponsor or get involved or anything like that, obviously, the more the merrier.
Okay. Any other questions for comments? Well, thank you very much for your presentation.
Yeah. Thank you.
And item number eleven is a, uh, a presentation regarding the proposition that's gender obligation bond, bond title. And, uh, we have Reagan Holiday of UMB.
Good evening, everyone. Um, I'm Reagan Holiday, I'm with UMB Public Finance. Um, I'm here tonight, uh, simply to make sure that I introduce myself as the city's new municipal advisor for, um, the bond issue. So I appreciate, uh, you all selecting me and I'm excited to be working with you all. Uh, the main goal here tonight is just if you have any questions, certainly bring them to me at any time and particularly, um, you know, I'm happy to make sure that, um, there's any questions to make sure they're answered. Uh, we provided you, I think, with the, uh, timeline, the preliminary timeline that we've put together. Um, you know, some of the constraints that we've obviously are working with or schedules. So that's kind of why you'll see we've highlighted, uh, the different city council meetings. And the goal is to, to make sure that we're using your regular council meeting schedule. Um, also just making sure that we're compliant with your, uh, reading requirements. So kind of big picture here, um, obviously the, the next thing we've kind of got, well, today happened, um, bond council provided us with the first draft of bond documents. So we'll be in the review process for the next couple of weeks and providing comments on those. Um, in the meantime, we'll also be initiating the rating process. So the bonds will be rated. Um, you already currently have a rating with, um, S and P global. The plan is to go ahead and, uh, use them as well for the new issuance, since they're already familiar with you all. That's typically the, the way to go and makes it fewer questions for, um, your city officials to have to go through, but also if they're familiar with you, that's a good thing. Um, so we'll go ahead and get the rating process started. Um, the plan, um, as you'll see, is we're going to try to, um, get the rating call scheduled up probably the first week of, of August. Once again, this is a little bit of a moving target. It'll depend on their, what analysts are assigned and what their schedule is. But we're just kind of as a moving target. By then we should have the bond documents, um, commented on, revised, updated and in, in good enough shape for us to have the call at that point. Um, and in the meantime, at your next meeting, we will have the first and second reading of the bond ordinance, which that will essentially, um, spell out the, the general idea about the bonds. You mean that their general obligation bonds, the basic terms. There will be blanks in the ordinance for the first and second reading because that pricing information, which is going to be your interest rates, um, the kind of the, the main structure, that's not going to be available until we sell the bonds. So you're just kind of giving you a heads up, that's a little unusual, I know, but you will have some blanks in that ordinance. Um, there will also be some exhibits to that ordinance. You'll have the bond, um, you're going to have a continuing disclosure agreement. You're going to have a federal tax certificate. So there'll be some exhibits that will also have, um, blanks in them as well. But for your official act, it's going to be that particular bond ordinance and that will be the first and second reading. And then you will also be adopting a sale resolution, which is a simple. And then you will also be adopting a sale resolution, which is essentially saying that you're agreeing to the sale of the bonds. And as an exhibit to that, you're going to have the notice of sale as well as the preliminary official statement. Which that's the key document that's used to sell the bonds. It's basically a, a, a one-on-one about the city, um, the local economy, um, the structure of the financing. And so you all are doing a competitive bond sale, so what that means is that notice of sale will then be posted out there to the world. And, um, and then at the actual bond sale date, um. We will have broker dealers can then bid on that transaction. So those are your two kind of official acts at the next meeting. Um, and then somewhere thereafter, um, we will get the rating from the rating agency. We will finalize that offering document, the POS. Uh, we will get the bond sale set up on the national platform that we use for, um, uni-bond sales. That notice of sale will be published. It can be published both, um. Basically on the parity site, which, but it can also be published in papers if you, you know, if you wanted it. I think. The last time we looked, it was your last transaction was in the county end. I would say as years have progressed, there's fewer times that they, they usually get published, but that's not to say that if you didn't want it, you could have it published. In, uh, a, a paper offering. Uh, and then the bond sale right now is planned for the morning of September tenth, so it coincides with your regular council meeting. So what will happen at that point is the, the bids will come in and the lowest to interest cost bid would be accepted. Um, they will accept basically, uh, and. A, uh, a verbal, um, acceptance by, um. Your city officials and then we will actually do formal award is when you will, uh, approve that bond ordinance that evening. And then as part of that, there'll be documents that will need to be signed. Uh, Shannon Creighton, who is your bond counsel at Gilmore and Bell, she will probably be in attendance at that meeting is my guess. Um, with all the documents so that we can go ahead and get the documents signed. Um, and then that transcript of documents is then provided, um, by bond counsel to the state auditors office for approval. And so you're going to see that that's kind of another constraint that we are working around is to make sure that, that the state auditor's office has plenty of time to review. The transcript and we get that approval. Uh, the other thing that we're working around is the fact that your bond ordinances. Um, don't become effective until fifteen days, so we can't actually close on the transaction. Until, um, we've passed that fifteen day mark. So, um, that's kind of why you've got quite a bit of time between the bond sale and approval. And then your, uh, transaction closing. And right now we've got that closing at September twenty fifth, so that would then be when the project funds would be deposited. And, uh, I know that you are incurring some costs, I think, um, as you go right now for the project. What will happen is then you will be reimbursed for those project costs that you've already expended, um, at the time of closing. And so there's a basically a, um. A reimbursement requisition that will be put together and signed and then presented at that time. So that you guys can get reimbursed. And that kind of happens on the day of closing and then all the cost of issuance will be paid from the bond proceeds. And that will happen as well once those project funds are deposited. That's kind of it at a high level. Does anyone have any questions at this point? Obviously, I'll be back at the next meeting, so if there's questions, don't worry, I, I'll still be able to answer them then.
Thank you. You've done a good job of communicating the, uh, the process. Appreciate it.
Thank you so much. I look forward to working with everyone.
Thank you. Uh, move on to item number twelve. Which is a resolution of the city council of the city of Maplewood, Missouri, appointing Lacy Mitchell. To the Special Business District Tax Advisory Commission, establishing return of office as expiring June thirty of twenty twenty seven. Motion to approve the resolution. If we have a motion, second, is there any discussion? Lacy is the proprietor of the State Farm. So, uh, roll call vote, please.
Council member Correll.
Uh, yes.
Council member Fockingham.
Yes.
Council member Garcia.
Yes.
Mayor Greenberg.
Yes.
Council member Homa.
Yes.
Council member Page.
Yes.
Resolution twenty-four dash forty-three is approved.
Thank you. Item number thirteen is a special council, which we adopt and to establish. And make the public procedure to disclose potential conflicts of interest and substantial interest for certain officials. Motion to approve the ordinance. Second, is there any discussion? Uh, are those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Second reading, to the city council of the city of Maplewood, Missouri, to adopt and to establish and make. The public procedure to disclose potential conflicts of interest and substantial interest for officials. Motion to approve the ordinance. Second. We have a motion, a second, any discussion? Are those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? The third and final reading will be held at our next meeting. Uh, we move on to item fourteen, which is both sixty-five, six amendments in the city. Council of the city of Maplewood, Missouri, code of evidence is chapter fifty-six, zone, article two, district regulations. Division two, that's our single family residential district section fifty-six dash seventy-three. These regulations in article five, nine, four, nine, section fi- five, fifty-six slash one, zero, six, one. And confirmed, it's of record, a residential district subsection. Size and set back standards into a. With existing injustices preserved local mobility characteristics and housing affordability. Motion to approve the law. Second, we have a motion, a second, and, uh, uh, would anyone like to start a discussion? Yeah, I, my feeling is that, uh, I've read the analysis that was performed by San Diego. And, um, you know, I don't, you know, my opinion, especially having worked with as many businesses as I have is that. Uh, unless there's a sense of urgency here, uh, we do have a comprehensive plan that we've approved. Uh, now that's going to take a while and that's going to result in, um. Likely, you know, writing of our zone where it is. So we have an opportunity to collect time to. Uh, a professional consultant on putting together. Uh, and use my ordinance for senior family residential. So, you know, based on that, I would prefer to hold off on this. The other option is that we approve it now and then we change it. Uh, or we have the ability to change it, uh, later on, uh. Based on the schedule that I discussed. Uh, so, um, uh, the, the advantage of that is that we would. Be able to see exactly how well it worked in the meantime. Uh, the disadvantage is that, um, we're going to probably keep the burden of adjustment busy. Uh, based on, you know, the analysis especially that I, that I've seen performed, um. But, um, does anyone else have any feelings about?
I really, I was gonna say, I really appreciate the, you know, we had an earlier version of this kind of legislative ordinances. That we looked at earlier this year and we had some really good feedback about some. Opportunities to improve it, and I really, I really appreciate the thoroughness with which people have been working on this and the improvements that we have on it.
Yeah, and one of the biggest concern, or one of my, uh, major concerns is, uh. People looking to purchase a home in Maplewood. Uh, it's, you know, they would have to talk to staff and, uh. Afterly based on our, the work that we've done previously, what kind of investment do we have in? Uh, providing that information for people in terms of time.
Well, the revision took out the, uh, the, the. Analysis requirement, so it's, it's not going to be as much time. It's, it's pretty much straightforward right now with the five hundred square feet. The, the prior version would have taken a tremendous amount of time, but that's been modified or amended.
Okay, uh. The other thing, uh, with the zoning, most people need to know what, what they're signing up for. And, uh, you know, if we feel that, uh, that this covers it, then, um. Yeah, then we would, uh, go to move forward with it. Any other discussion?
I, I agree that it's, it's imperfect, but I think it's a good stopgap measure that we could change and it's. Um, so we can have inputs until we get more guidance from the comprehensive plan and if we need. A more global zoning change that could come at that time, I think this is a good measure to have. That timeline can be lengthy for the comprehensive plan, about time to get those zoning changes, maybe looking at two and a half years from now. So I think this is something good to have in place in the interim and give us some exposure, and we can make changes to it, we always can.
Okay, any other discussion? In that case, uh, uh, I'm looking for a motion.
Uh, we've already put the motion on.
I'm sorry, uh, we will call verdict.
Council member Fockingham.
Yes.
Council member Garcia.
Yes.
Mayor Greenberg.
No.
Council member Homa.
Yes.
Council member Page.
Yes.
Council member Correll.
Yes.
Bill sixty-two fifty-six becomes ordinance number sixty fifty.
Okay, uh, item number fifteen is old business. Is there any old business? If that's the case, then we'll move on to item number sixteen, which is council communication. We have any communication to address? Okay, um. Mayor's report, uh. Hmm, there's not much to report right now. Uh, let's move on to the city attorney. Okay, how about the city manager?
I have a little bit to report.
Okay.
Um, it is summertime and with it we see an increase in public safety calls. We've had an increase, um, around our parks. And in response to that, we are looking to organize ward meetings to give residents an opportunity to engage with council and staff members. To express their concerns, to provide an opportunity for Q and A. Um, and to solicit suggestions from our community members about ways that we can improve safety in our parks and then our individual wards. We're working first on a Ward One meeting, which looks to, um, potentially happen in early August. We would be. Advertising that with yard signs and via emailing on the city's website and social media. Um, and we'll really use that as a pilot to understand, um, whether that's a successful model to implement in other wards. I think we have some needs in Ward Two as well related to recent public safety incidents and. Um, if our two council members are interested in moving forward on something like that before the end of the summer, I'd certainly encourage it.
I'm happy to open up my driveway as the scene of the crime. If people want to tour it.
I think we've spent a lot of time examining a, a, a crime scene in your driveway. We appreciate that.
I'm all in favor of this, by the way.
Um, and, and if this is a, a, a good way to engage with our residents, we may look at doing it, uh, in each board on a seven-year basis potentially. As you know, our court administrator will be leaving us, um, next week. So I encourage those of you with connections in the court realm to, uh, promote that, uh, position. And we have had our court administrator in place for thirty-seven years, so you can imagine this is, uh, going to be a big change for us. And to identify and train seven new up. Ruth Rask has contributed a significant portion of her career to the city of Maplewood and we're extremely grateful. I think you all are aware that we will be celebrating her on her last day and invite you to come and have cake and eliminate with us as we celebrate her tenure. Um, but I'm saying it in this meeting as well, just to put it on the record that we're looking for somebody equally as talented to, to come join us at Maplewood. Um, additionally, I have included, um, Mr. Track source memo about MSD's proposed O C A tax continuation. Um, I'll give him an opportunity to speak briefly about it, but we are recommending against the continuation of this particular tax. Um, for the reasons that Mr. Track resides in his memo.
I really have nothing to add except for the fact that. Based on our current system, we don't have the same needs that a lot of other cities do, and we're actually going to have. More mo- we're actually going to receive more money with Prop S's passage and it'll basically be. Kind of a wash on residents' tax bills. There's no reason to keep the O C M I tax for Maplewood. And really all but about nine municipalities within, uh, Deer Creek watershed, so we recommend just to. Recommend the elimination of that, which I anticipate MSD will do.
Anything else?
I'd like to briefly present for you the SWOT analysis that you've all requested as part of my employment contract. I have included the report here in the council packet. I want to just call out a couple of findings and recommendations and allow you some time to ask questions if you have them. Um, in terms of strengths, I think it reveals some pretty critical things that, uh, I think we're proud of being able to continue. Um, we have strengths in customer service, community engagement, and interdepartmental collaboration. The data shows that, uh, forty-one of the forty-nine respondents, and let me know for those who don't have it in front of them. We have seventy-seven staff members, forty-nine responded to the LSSTF survey, forty-one of those, or eighty-three percent of them. Report that they are very satisfied or somewhat satisfied with the city as a workplace. So I think that shows for us that the, the raw materials we need to improve are already present. However, we do face some challenges which I've outlined. Those include staffing shortages, uh, outdated facilities and equipment. Resource constraints, obviously, of our budget, and communication gaps. We've identified off opportunities in existing, um. In leveraging existing technology and new technology and expanding our partnerships and investing in professional development for staff. Potential threats we've identified include economic fluctuations, demographic changes in Maplewood, and in, um. A competitive job market for talent, as we're seeing, um, it's increasingly difficult for us to identify candidates to fill vacant positions. Based on the analysis I presented, my key recommendations include addressing the staffing concerns, which are present across the organization and have a lot to do with us. Being consistent in the way that we develop and implement, um, personnel ordinances and regulations. Um, upgrading facilities where possible, improving internal communications, expanding our professional development opportunities. And developing long-term strategies for economic development and community engagement. Again, those will be long-term strategies because as we've discussed previously and I presented to you in my interview process, those are not easy fixes. But I am heartened that the data collected from staff reinforces that that, those are key needs. Um, so I'm happy to take any questions that you have about the results of the survey and the SWOT analysis.
The next step for the SWOT analysis, uh, is.
The recommendations that are included will be discussed at department heads meeting tomorrow morning. With an intention of me working with individual department heads around departmental goal setting. We currently don't have a performance evaluation process in place for all areas of the organization. That will be implemented this fall, so we typically have, um, in those departments where that process does exist. A year-end, a December process with results in January. So alongside that, we will be developing an annual goal-setting process for each department. And those goals will be articulated, documented, and measured throughout the performance evaluation period in the upcoming calendar year.
Yeah, I'll echo Sean. A rather good SWOT analysis. This was a good one. Um, I, what I noted is, um, a lot of the strengths around service and community engagement. And some of the weaknesses, most of the weaknesses are around things that we need to do that we can't afford to do. Um, so I appreciate that you gave us some paths forward that. Some of them cost money, a lot of them don't, and there are things that we can do to make improvements that are not. High-dollar items, so I appreciate the work everybody did and that there are some things that we can try to do in the midterm. To make improvements that are not going to break the budget.
I, I will just add my appreciation to your voice, because I think, uh, that's. I haven't got a chance to read that till today, and I just kept thinking as I was reading through it that this is like something we can go back to a lot, because it really, I feel like we got some very raw. Sort of output from the department heads, really good document.
I'm really impressed with the, um, engagement volume.
Well, I thank you for requiring this of me. I think this was a very useful exercise, um, one that we may not have been motivated to do just at this moment in particular. Um, but I feel like I'm still new enough in this role to be able to look at this with fresh eyes. Um, also, I'm new enough to convince a whole staff worth of people that taking a survey is worthwhile. Um, and I want to confirm that to them by sharing back the results of this study, obviously. And give them some detailed analysis about their own feedback about the organization, um, because I think that again helps to build. Those communication needs that we have, that internal communication feedback loop to reassure staff that. When they do give us feedback, we document. Feedback loop to reassure staff that when they do give us feedback, we document it, we listen to it and we figure out that we can take action.
It did point out that we, we need to have some contingency plans based on revenue stream versus, uh. Expenses. And, uh, that's going to be the biggest challenge. That we'll have, uh, providing, uh, the current level of public service that we do. Uh, with, uh, the economic. Situation that we're going to be encountering moving forward, so. Um, this is a good step towards that, realizing what we need to do. Um, are there any other items, uh, on the city manager's report? Okay, uh, item number 20 is public forum. It's the second of two public forums. Come on up. Give us your name and address and try and eliminate two ones if you can.
Uh, my name is Susan Piazza. Um, I'm your municipal manager for Republic Services. I manage the trash recycle contract for your residents. And, um, I live in Godfrey, Illinois. Um. My work address is Bridgeton at St. Charles Rock Road. I just want to, um. Comment, um, you talked about your SWOT analysis and, uh, customer service and I just want to give a kudos to the city. I work closely with the city staff. I'm looking at you all like I've not met you guys one-on-one or even in a group setting. Anthony, Amber, Jerry Cook, Gina, Tiffany, work very closely with. Um, and I think we have a great rapport. They know how to get ahold of me. If we have a hiccup and need to take care of something or. We have to get a dumpster out of a tree that's flooded in Deer Creek, um, we can work on that as well, but, um, it's happened twice. Anyway, um, I just want to give a, a thank you to the staff because they've been great to work with. I am going to be here at meetings in the near future. Um, our contract has expired at the end of this year. Well, work towards an extension, hopefully, uh, to that end without any interruption in service there and, um. Just want to say thank you for the opportunity to work with your staff and I'm looking forward to seeing you as well.
You noticed that we talked about financial, uh, concerns by people you came up. Uh. And last, last time you and I talked, uh, did you say that you're going to reduce the, uh?
Tell me what in your budget has gone down, right? How? Anyway, now I look forward to, to continue working, uh, hopefully with the staff and as well with you. And, uh, Anthony knows how to, they both know how to get ahold of me, but, uh, I do have some cards here if you want to grab me afterwards. Thank you.
Thank you. Um, is there anyone else that would like to speak at the opening? Uh. In that case, we. I'm only trying to show the motion to hold a closed session. And, uh.
Motion to hold a closed session to discuss matters relating to. And, uh, uh, real estate matters and negotiated contracts.
Second. We have a motion, a section, that's the second, uh, coming back, call this.
Council member Garcia.
Yes.
Mayor Greenberg.
Yes.
Council member Homa.
Yes.
Council member Page.
Yes.
Council member Corell.
Yes.
Council member Fockingham.
Yes.
Motion is approved.
So we'll go into closed session. We'll come back in the joint, but there won't be any further action taken by, uh. Uh, council of public study. Thank you.